The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, Councilwoman Tompkins will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for coming. We have a few special things we're going to be doing this evening, but before we begin tonight's formal agenda, I would like to take a moment to recognize Jim Ross and his recent passing. Jim was a 34-year veteran of the Plainville Fire Department. He was a lifelong resident of Plainville. He has a great many friends and family left here to remember him. And if you would please take a moment just to remember him in silence, I would appreciate Thank you for your consideration. At this point, we do also have a number of our firefighters here, and I would like to welcome anybody that would like to come to the podium and say a few words about Jim and how you remembered him and how he'll, I'm sure, be kept in your thoughts for many years to come. Just come to the podium and just state your name if you wish to say anything about Jim. Chief?
Hi. My name's Kevin Toner. I'm the chief of the Plainville Fire Department. I've known Jimmy Ross most of my life. Sometimes we're good, sometimes we're not. We used to call each other the most stubborn Irishman on earth, and I'm not sure who really won that battle. No matter what, Jimmy was always a very loyal person. He was a hard worker. If he couldn't give it 110 percent, he wasn't going to touch it. He was a very devoted individual for many, many years on the fire department. He's going to be sorely missed. I've spent some time with his family over the weekend, some of the firefighters. It's very devastating when somebody gets pulled away from you in that fashion. And we're going to miss him dearly. I want to wish his family the best. It's a very difficult situation to even talk about tonight, so we probably won't have a lot of guys speaking tonight because everybody's emotional one way or the other over it. But Jimmy was a wonderful person. His family's a wonderful family, and we're going to miss him sorely. Jimmy, thank you for everything you did for us.
Thank you, Chief.
My name's Bob O'Day. I've been a member of the fire department since 1970 and have known Jim all my life. I was part of the group that we went to the accident, and some of the things that I remember about Jim are two words that really stand out in all of our minds, probably. First of all, loyalty, as Kevin referred to. Jim was always the rock. Jim had every one of our backs. Even if he didn't like you, he'd tell you he didn't like you, but he had your back. He would be there for you. He did things that people have no idea what they did. He was the most loyal, devoted, do-gooder that we've ever known. The second thing I remember, or am going to remember now about Jim, is hope. And everybody's probably wondering, what do you mean, "hope"? Well, Jim was a practical joker, and right now, I've got nothing but hope that he's going to come up with that silly grin in his teeth and say, "Yeah, I got you all. I got you all." So, Jim, rest in peace. We love you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to say anything tonight? Okay. Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. They are truly heartfelt, and I'd like to ask my fellow councilpeople if they would like to extend a few words of condolence to Jim and his family.
Madam Chair, I'll say. Jimmy was a friend of my parents, and I met him when I was just a little kid. And the thing I always remember is the first time I shook his hand. We were in Garfield Jones, and it was like shaking a catcher's mitt, you know, like rough, but it was this giant hand. And I think I, I don't know, I was probably four or five. I mean, I was little, and the first thing was those teeth came out of his mouth. You know, and that's, I think every time I saw him, up until maybe two weeks ago was the last time I saw him, I think those teeth came out of his mouth. He really was one of the great ones, and yeah, he's going to be missed. Plainville lost a good one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to extend my sympathies to everyone in the fire department as well. Every time someone spoke about Jimmy Ross, it was always something nice, and I don't think that happens very often with anyone, especially when you work with so many people. And I just, it is a great loss for everyone, I know, because he was a good guy, so I'm sorry.
So, I'll just, my short story about Jim Ross. Some years back, a friend of mine tried to encourage Jim to run for the town council. That was met with hilarity, needless to say, and he said, "No, no, I could never do that job." And he didn't take up that calling, but I will say, he took up a much more important calling and something that required bravery and courage. He went through a lot of training, and he certainly did something that was far more difficult than serving on a board or commission here on the town council. So, for that, I'll always remember, he thought he couldn't step up to this job, but truly, there are very few of us who could have stepped up to the job that he ever did for the town of Plainville. So, to his family, with a heartfelt thank you and my most deep sympathy to them, because I know he'll be truly missed for a very long time to come. I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you very much for doing that. Will begin the rest of our meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to move the Town Council and Board of Education appointments to the beginning of the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to ratify establishing two public hearings Monday, August 20th, 2018, at 7:00 in the municipal center to hear public comments on an ordinance entitled "Fire Department" and an ordinance entitled "Vehicles and Traffic."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so for our first appointment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Danny Carrier from the Capitol Projects Building Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Danny Carrier to Town Council for the term ending November 11th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm going to call you up here in a second, Danny. Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Lori Consalvo to the Board of Education for term ending November 5th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I would like to thank both of these folks for stepping up to do these jobs. They are certainly time-consuming and require a lot of thoughtfulness, but we certainly appreciate your willing to volunteer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have to swear in our two new appointees, so if you guys would step up with Carol, we'll get you sworn in.
Raise your hands, please. You must swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law. Your duties as DA is not over the time. And Lori doesn't need to apologize. To the best of your abilities, so.
You don't get to rest, Danny. Jump up. Okay. I'm wondering if, Carol, should we read the call of the public hearings now so we can get that done?
Do the presentation first.
Okay. All right. We'll do it after. All right. Next part of our agenda, we have our, some very interesting times have happened recently with our fire company yet again. Not only are they brave men that respond to the call when the bell rings in Plainville, but we have a firefighter who is always on alert wherever he is. So, tonight, we're going to recognize James Bo Lenoey. Jim, if you will come to the podium, I have a proclamation for you, and then we're going to have State Representative Bill Pannett also has something for you, so. I'm sure many of you have recently been made aware of an episode in which our firefighter, Bo Lenoey, was involved. He is an absolute hero with courage to spare and determination to help people, not just in Plainville, but as you have probably seen, he was on the local news, and he stepped up to help a family escape a burning building without a moment's hesitation. The town council believes this is truly a courageous thing that you did, and it certainly must be recognized by not only the town council, but our community at large. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to read a proclamation. It's a little bit long, but the words are very meaningful, and it really describes what happened on that particular day as you were driving home from work. Whereas in 2003, James Bo Lenoey Jr. became a member of the Plainville Fire Company and Volunteer Fire Department as a probationary firefighter, and after completing the necessary requirements, was appointed as a regular firefighter. And whereas also in 2003, Bo joined the United States Marine Corps, where he served two tours of duty in Iraq and completed his duty in 2011, achieving the rank of corporal. And whereas firefighters and soldiers follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. And whereas during Bo's 15 years as a first responder, it has become second nature to respond quickly to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and community. And whereas on July 31st, 2018, in an effort to evade traffic backup on his way home from work, he exited the highway in Bloomfield, an exit he had only taken once before, and smelled smoke and recognized it as a smell of a structure burning. And whereas after seeing smoke, Bo followed into a house on Cottage Street, got out of his car, and ran to the burning home, where he was quickly approached by a gentleman identifying himself as a retired assistant fire chief from Hartford. And whereas together, they found a step ladder next door and removed a semi-conscious woman from a second-floor window. And whereas with additional assistance from neighbors, an off-duty Hartford police lieutenant and a Bloomfield police officer, an extension ladder was then placed near the rear of the house, which Bo quickly climbed to remove an elderly gentleman from the roof. That says it all. Now, therefore be it resolved, we, the Plainville Town Council, consider it an honor and a great privilege to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to James Bo Lenoey Jr. for his dedicated service to the welfare of others. And it is signed by me, Danny Carrier, Ty Cox, Jesse Nazzo, Rosemary Maranti, Deborah Tompkins, and Christopher Wazorko. It's dated this 20th day of August, 2018. I mean, this is a man who put self before harm. He knew what he had to do. Due to his training in the military, along with the extensive training in our fire department, he was able to take quick action and save two lives with the help of others. So, for that, we are eternally grateful, and congratulations.
That says most of it. This is a citation from the state of Connecticut from myself and Senator Martin, who's at a fundraising event for a charity elsewhere, so I'm standing for him as well. And it states, "Be hereby known to all of the Connecticut General Assembly..." Before I read, I'll let you know that actually, people in Hartford were talking about this since you made the news and you splashed all over Facebook and everywhere else. The Capitol Police and people up in Hartford, up at the legislative office building, even in the off-season here with very few people up there, were talking about it. "Be hereby known to all of the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to James Bo Lenoey Jr. in recognition of your extraordinary bravery and selflessness, which you helped save a Bloomfield family from a fire. Not many people would stop their car to enter a burning home, ensure that nobody was left inside. You put yourself at risk, help others in need, and are truly a hero. We thank you for this incredible act of kindness and wish you all the best of luck in all your future endeavors." Don't leave the highway anymore. Maybe it's good that you do. If it was my house, I'd be happy that you got off the highway. "The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion, this 20th day of August, the State Capitol, signed by Martin M. Looney, President Pro Tem of the Senate, Joe Arasimowitz, the Speaker of the House, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State." So, congratulations.
A man of action in few words. Very good. Thank you again from all of us for all that you do every day. We have two public hearings scheduled. I'll have the town clerk read the notice, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, August 20th, 2018, in the council chambers of the municipal center, 1 Central Square, to consider proposed amendments to ordinance entitled "Fire Department" and ordinance entitled "Vehicles and Traffic." Copies of the proposed amendments are available at the town clerk's office, dated at Plainville the 16th day of August.
Thank you. At this time, I welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. The first public hearing we'll be speaking to is the amendment to the fire department ordinance. Does anybody wish to speak to that ordinance? Perhaps we should just give a highlight as to what we're doing here. Robert, could you just give a brief overview for those that may not have read our changes?
Yes, I will. About a half a dozen years ago, the town council, working with the fire department, formed a committee to develop a fire ordinance. That ordinance was extensive, and one of the provisions in the ordinance was to create a retirement date, you know, for firefighters, and it was at age 65. And there was some limited duties that firefighters were allowed to do beyond that, including participating in the fire police and doing other, say, staff duties that may be needed by the chief. About two months ago, I was approached by a firefighter who was approaching 65 years old, and he indicated that while he understood the ordinance and it's been in place for a long time, would the town council consider extending the date or extending the duties that one could do once they reached the age of 65 to include a driver, driver operator? He explained to me that the driver isn't somebody who goes into the fire. He's not, you know, he isn't, you know, interior firefighter, but that that would be the person that would drive the truck to the incident and set the truck up, make sure everything was done properly, and that that generally requires, you know, a lot of knowledge and that experience, and that there weren't, you know, not everybody who's in the fire department or company, you know, is a driver as well. And so, he felt he had a lot more to give, and that there were others that were approaching 65 that had a lot more to give. And, you know, since the ordinance was put in place, you know, volunteerism is, for those people who are in the company and in the department, they're very dedicated, but there's slightly less people volunteering than they have in the past. And so, I indicated that I would get ahold of the chief officers, have discussions with them. They, we met, they felt, they were very supportive of the concept, and they've written a letter of support, and basically, the amendment to the ordinance would allow for firefighters who attain the age of 65 to ask, you know, request of the department to be a driver operator until the age of 72, assuming that they, you know, pass the required physicals. We did check with other communities to see, you know, what they have done. We've checked with our insurance companies to see what they have, their advice was, and what we found was other communities allow for this type of opportunity, this type of assignment. And from our insurance people, they indicated that if it was in the ordinance, that would allow somebody to stay at that, you know, to stay in, do those specific duties, that that would not impact our insurance rates at all, and that this is relatively commonplace throughout the state of Connecticut. So, with that in mind, you know, we drafted up with Attorney Mastriani and some help from the fire department leaders, you know, the amendment that you have before you this evening.
Okay.
Probably wasn't as short as you wanted it to be, but...
That's okay. Okay. Well, having said that, I again open up the discussion to anybody that wishes to speak to the proposed change to our fire ordinance. You can use either podium. I ask that you state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the ordinance change public hearing?
Hi. Jeff Johnson, 32, Peach Orchard Hill. I'm the one who approached the town manager about this question. Just for an example, July 18th, when I turned 65, that week, that week, we happened to have two extracations, which I drove to both, and a plane crash, which I drove. So, you know, I'm not blowing my own horn, but it's like, you know, I'm not so sure that anything would have gotten out of that day in addition to what we did roll. Daytime response, I'm basically talking about, just basically daytime. So, I think it's a step in the right direction. You're going to get two drivers back, one me and another one, not to mention what it's going to do for the future of guys that are turning older. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for what you do. Does anybody else wish to speak to the ordinance?
Dave Mazzaric, 71, West Broad Street.
Hi, Dave.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Well, I'm one of the next drivers that's going to be retiring shortly.
Oh.
And like a couple that left, JJ and I drove to one of the rescues. Bobby O'Day actually took the trucks from us so we can actually pull somebody from the vehicle. That's what we do during the day. You're scarce. I'll take any test possible. If I can pass it, I want to stay. But right now, until I'm 65, I'm going to fight as many fires as I can. Jimmy Ross taught me well, and I want to train some of the new guys coming around what to do, and I think I proved myself. But it's probably going to be the worst time of my life to turn 65.
It's not that bad.
Yeah, but to give up firefighting for 38 years?
Of course.
I'm going to shed some tears.
Of course.
So, we'll take as many tests as we can. Whatever, as long as I can pass, I want to keep driving.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak to the ordinance change? Chief?
Kevin Toner, 59, Julie Road, also the fire chief. I just want to reiterate what Robert had said earlier. We've got some very talented people here that are not ready to retire. There's no real reason that they should retire, other than we have an age restriction. I think moving them off to a driver is the proper thing to do. It takes them out of the grueling task of being an inside firefighter, which is really a young man's game. It really is, and it puts them in a position where they can keep an eye on things, they can get a truck to a scene, they can get everything rolling for us, we can get water. We can't put the fire out without water, and these guys are very capable of doing it. I don't see any reason to make them retire at that point. They're very useful to us in the day of declining volunteers. I think it's a very good step, and I think JJ, Jeff Johnson, had the right idea in moving this forward. I'd appreciate everyone's support on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on the ordinance? For the fire department? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for your perspective. It's certainly for the council very important to hear from the fire department. And Jeff, from your perspective, we appreciate all that you do for the town, so it certainly helps us out with this important decision. So, thanks again for coming this evening. The next public hearing is amendment to vehicles and traffic ordinance. Does anybody wish to speak to this change in our ordinance to traffic? And Robert, did we talk about this? It's kind of, there's a lot of parts to that, so.
We did talk about it in a previous council meeting, but I could give you a briefer explanation in the fire ordinance.
Okay. All right. Does anybody wish to speak to the...
Our current zoning, our current zoning regulations do not allow for commercial vehicles to park on private property in residential zones. What we found is that there seems to be a loophole if a commercial vehicle parks on a street in a residential zone, that really doesn't, you know, the zoning doesn't really cover that. So, we've had some instances where people say, "Well, I'm not parking on my property. You don't park it on the street." It's still, the intent was not to have commercial vehicles parking in residential zones. So, this particular ordinance is designed to make it a violation, that parking violation that could be, people could be fined by the police department if they continue to park commercial vehicles in a residential zone.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the amendment to our vehicle and traffic ordinance? Anybody wish to speak to the vehicle and traffic ordinance changes? Last chance.
Kathy, I would point out that the police chief submitted some comments this afternoon.
Okay.
He put it in a format that made it very difficult for me to make a copy of it so that you could read it.
Okay.
It's really some grammatical changes, some definitions and whatnot. It doesn't change the intent of the ordinance, so, you know...
Oh, just language and to that nature?
Yeah, just some language, just to clear up some, you know, the police would enforce it, that, you know, it said restrictive parking, he said it'd be better to say no parking as determined by the LTA, meaning the local traffic authority, things like that. So, a couple of grammatical changes, that was all, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll close both public hearings. Thank you all for your comments. Very much appreciated. At this point, if you would like to stay, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting, but we have a balloon festival to get ready for, so. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'll take a few minutes.
Thanks for telling me.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
I know.
They're a little bit chubby.
Copy that, too. Second.
Chief thing?
Okay.
Pretty ugly. Well, just the way it wouldn't print, so I had to cut and paste.
Okay. We will resume the rest of our agenda here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes for July 16th, 2018, regular meeting, and July 25th, 2018, special meeting.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions? I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements or reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Nazo.
I, well, I can tell you, I attended the inland wetlands committee, the IWWC meeting, the most current one, and they are a very efficient group. And I was quite taken with that. But a bigger announcement is Nicole Palmieri and myself are working to round up volunteers for the balloon festival, which starts Friday. We need some people for particularly Saturday evening. But if anyone would like to volunteer, please contact Nicole or myself. You can see us after the meeting, or, I don't want to start blurring out phone numbers, but.
Oh.
Reach one of us afterwards, or I'm available through the town website as well. So we do need some volunteers for this weekend.
Okay. Proves to be a good one so far.
Yeah, looks like a nice weather.
Looks like it's going to be nice, and I'm sure it'll be successful as always. All right. Are there any other announcements or reports?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I am the liaison to the recycling committee, and it looks like we are getting closer to a system where we can put our clothing in pink bags.
Soft goods?
Yep, soft goods out with our regular trash and have them picked up free of charge. People wouldn't have to be bothered with it. So we're closer to that, right, Robert?
We're finalizing the agreement, and so I expect within probably thirty days, we'd, we'd be doing an announcement.
Yep. Okay.
Oh, good.
Very excited about that. Been a long time.
That's a good development. Does anybody else have anything to report?
Madam Chair?
Rosemary.
I attended the August eighth meeting of the conservation commission. And just a few highlights, their plans for the September fifteenth river cleanup, that's nine to noon. It's focusing on the Quinnipiac River, and volunteers are needed and welcomed. And September fifteenth is actually National Cleanup Day, not only river cleanup, but all kinds of cleanup. So it's really a perfect time to get involved. And they're also looking at dates for a future, like, town line, Quinnipiac cleanup that they would be doing jointly with Southington, but that's, that news is still to come. On two issues, the commission addressed the issue of fracking waste and also addressed opposition to the Tilcon Quarry proposal. And there's going to be more follow-up and work, I believe, at the next meeting, so I'll report further on that at our next meeting on, on September seventeenth. And two other quick items, the commission will be part of the September eleventh listening session on the town's plan for conservation and development. And finally, they're looking at new ideas already for Earth Day two thousand nineteen.
Oh, boy. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to report? Okay. Thank you for those comments. We will now go back to our appointments and resignations. We have a few more to take care of.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Adam Burgenti from the aviation commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Cheryl Zettergren to the aviation commission for the term ending October thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint David Underwood as constable for the term ending November fifth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Port of the town attorney. Good evening. Do we have anything tonight?
You don't have any reports tonight?
Thank you. All right. Robert, on to yours.
I have a couple of items. The first is the Wheeler Elementary School project update. The abatement of hazardous materials is complete, and facility staff is working to bring furniture back into the classroom and the offices. The project is currently on schedule and under budget. There will be fencing that will be installed around the construction area so that students will, will be protected while the school is being renovated and while it's, you know, while school is in, you know, while they're having school. Second item I have is the high school parking lot project update. The area around the track has been paved, as well as the back parking lots. They've been striped as well. Drain lines are being relocated. Work will begin on the front parking lot next. As part of the contract, ONG has submitted their guarantee maximum price proposal. The GMP is an amount that the construction contract shall not exceed. It consists of the construction manager's fee plus the cost of the work. As the construction manager, ONG is guaranteeing that this amount will not exceed one million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's not all the cost of the project, but that's, you know, certainly the great majority of it. There is an item in the new business that would authorize the town manager to sign the guaranteed maximum price proposal with ONG. I did give you a copy of that. It is including the low bid and including the construction manager's fee, as well as potential change orders not to exceed four percent. Next item I have is the water pollution control phosphorus upgrade project update. A pre-construction meeting has been held and the contractor is on site. Building permits have been issued and work will begin shortly. A groundbreaking ceremony is being scheduled for October ninth at ten a.m. You will get invitations to that, as well as other dignitaries and people who have participated in the project date. Next item I have is the memorandum of understanding with FCP dash two LLC. The Economic Development Agency is recommending a memorandum of understanding with FCP dash two LLC that would provide a tax abatement for a potential logistics site on property in the Farmington Corporate Park. The developer would have a potential of upwards to two hundred thousand to two hundred and ninety thousand square feet of new construction. This particular site is encumbered by being located in an aquifer protection zone, which limits the type of uses that can be included, that can be included. For example, high-tech manufacturing is prohibited in such a zone, even though there's some high-tech manufacturing in the zone right now. The EDA is recommending a tax fixing agreement that would provide a fifty percent tax abatement for a period of ten years to help the owner to better market the land as a logistics site. The MOU would give the owner up to five years to develop the property. If no development occurs within that timeframe, the MOU would need to be renegotiated. There is an item in a new business that would authorize the town manager to execute the MOU with FCP dash two LLC, as recommended by the Economic Development Agency. And Mark DeVoe, who is the staff person, economic development coordinator for the community and attends all of their meetings, is here this evening to give a little bit more detail as far as this particular recommendation to answer any questions that you may have as well. So with your permission, I'd like to ask Mark to step forward.
Great. Thank you.
And give you some ideas of the thought process.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. We also have Helen Burgenti here with us this evening. And I think you did a good job, first of all, Mark DeVoe, your director of planning and economic development. I think Robert did a good job of characterizing the, the scope of the, the request and the recommended agreement. Essentially, this agreement is similar to that given to the owner of the former Chung property. Okay? And I think, I may have misspoken the original email, but there is, there is a similar agreement that was approved, ratified by the town council in June, or, yeah, I believe, May of this year. And that was for Mr. Sinise Calco Construction. So those also sunset. They're prospective in nature. What it does is provide the owner with an ability to compete in the marketplace. And I can provide you with some examples, such as the town of Southington, that provided the same owner, developer that's doing the former Chung site with a one hundred percent, ten-year tax abatement. That's the, that's the state maximum. The, the benefits are controlled by the state statutes. So in this instance, and in the instance of the former Chung site, the EDA heard from the developer the constraints that Robert had mentioned, and the reasons why these properties have not developed, and where the town wants them to develop and realize the, the benefits of the increased grant list, the, the agency sees fit to perhaps, you know, beef up that competitive edge a little bit. The, the other example would be a similar facility, a logistics facility, that was approved in Cromwell last year, two thousand seventeen. The, the term was, I believe, for eight years only, but it was one hundred percent. Okay? So I think the EDA has, has remained competitive while maintaining a certain conservative approach. And that's, that's pretty much where they're coming from. So while it is one of the larger asks, based on my, my presence at the meeting and what I heard, I would say that there, I could characterize their decision as one that they felt supported the request.
Thanks, Mark. I, I did have some questions for Robert earlier today.
Yeah.
Regarding the duration of that, because typically, the, you know, what the EDA recommends is fifty percent for five years. But I do understand the scope of this is substantially greater than what, what normally comes before you. My only concern was ten years is a long commitment, certainly, in, in light of condition of the state of Connecticut. I was having a little, a moment of, I'm not sure. Should we, you know, should, is the ten years really what we need to do? How is that going to help things move along? But I did forget we've done that before.
Yeah. We don't know that it will, but in this case, which is somewhat unique, because the developer does not have a prospective tenant. And in many instances, when they, when they come to the town, they're holding someone in their hand. They're saying, we'd like to locate here. This is the package that we're bringing to you. And, you know, the town would look at it and say, well, okay, so forty percent for five years is inadequate incentive to, you know, help you make your mind up. And it's also a very nice handshake in terms of our relation to the business. In this case, the developer has no such client and is looking to be able to market the property through the two concept plans that he's already had approved through planning and zoning. One was two hundred and eight thousand over two buildings, the other two hundred and ninety-four thousand square feet over one building. So it is, by comparison, probably one up, if not the largest, if the larger one flies, single building in the town of Plainville. And, you know, notwithstanding developments like Connecticut Commons, for a single property, it's a rather significant, a potentially significant event in the town. So, and I believe that's why they, they supported his request.
Any other comments, questions for Mark?
And Mark, I think helpful always to clarify that the abatement is not on all taxes.
Correct.
It's on the quote-unquote improvements, which actually means the structure that they will be building.
Correct.
You know, because, you know, I have to say, confess my ignorance, if somebody had asked me ten years ago if I heard tax abatement, I would have thought it was on everything.
Right.
You know, hopefully I've become, I've become more educated since. But I think that's an important clarification, certainly for the public, yeah.
It is, yeah. And so at some point, the state changed their, their, the legislation to, or the statutes to permit these, what I would, you know, consider to be excessive, you know, one hundred percent for ten years. I think that is definitely going beyond the scope of reasonable. Although there are other municipalities that have done it, I don't know that we need to rise to that level of competition. And I, they didn't do that in this case.
Well, and, and the benefits go well beyond the, the, the property taxes that would be accrued. You know, there's, there's the personal property tax that would be part of this process. There's the employment. There's the people who are employed that that would be using, you know, other businesses in our community. So there's, you know, there's a lot of, the communities that give the one hundred percent are doing it because they're as much interested in the other benefits that go beyond just the property taxes. And the Economic Development Agency, which is made up of volunteers in the community who, who meet with the, the property owners and, and deal with these types of issues, you know, every month, or at least regularly, you know, have, have felt that this is something that would keep us competitive, because these are very desirable types of businesses that people want to have in their community. And, you know, I, I agree with their recommendation as well.
And this, just to finally to wrap it, this site has been difficult. Robert mentioned it was in the aquifer protection area. So uses that, as of two thousand six, more appropriately, two thousand eight, uses that are normally permitted in that zone, such as manufacturing. And there's actually, there's a broad category, twenty-eight uses, and they're very, you know, sort of, this one use involves, you know, many subuses. They're just no longer permitted there. When the state adopted this legislation, a lot of uses that could have potentially located there could not. And you'll notice that the park was developing at a nice clip before this legislation occurred. The only items, the only businesses that have been able to develop there since are businesses such as transportation. You know, there's been no manufacturing permitted since the adoption of this, this legislation. So it's been a deterrent to development in the, in the area.
Well, I think protecting our aquifer is paramount for everybody. That is certainly not something anybody's going to even think about, you know, doing anything that's unlawful. And, and rightly so. We need to protect those properties. But Mr. Sager has done a very nice job of developing the property he has for, for, within the regulations of what currently exists. So I, I think you've helped me.
Okay.
Explain how this is transpiring. And it's also good to know what other communities are doing in terms of economic development and what they're offering companies and businesses to come in and get started. So I think it's, makes some sense to me now.
Good. And remember, we are competing with them as well.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an important thing to remember.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Mark?
I, I would point out that I, I think the aquifer protection regulations have gone overboard from the state side. There is technology available, and there's techniques that could be employed to ensure that these types of manufacturing, modern manufacturing facilities have the ability to put in place safeguards to make sure that the, you know, the aquifer is, is protected. In fact, we have many manufacturing facilities in an aquifer protection zone that, that are already putting, you know, that are already employing those types of, those type of techniques. But unfortunately, at the state level, it was, it's a black and white issue. If you've beat a certain code.
Yep.
Manufacturing code, it's a no. No exceptions. You could, you could build it, you could build a, you know, a big bowl that would hold, if, if there was a, if there was a, some type of catastrophic problem that would all be contained, that, you know, that, that wouldn't even be good enough.
Right. Well, there has been a problem down on Johnson Avenue with water, and that's why the water company had to build a special treatment tower down there, because certain things got into the aquifer. And that, and that was probably decades before any sort of, you know.
Right. That's what I meant, the modern technology.
Reclaiming of bad things before they got in. So we did have an episode of that. And that's still ongoing, isn't it? They still have to operate that in order to make sure the water is, it meets standards. So, okay. I agree with you, up to a degree, but.
That's okay.
Okay.
Pretty good to disagree.
If we have no other questions for Mark. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Next item I have is the CROG membership benefits. Plainville is one of thirty-eight member towns in the capital region council of governments. Recently, CROG provided information regarding the benefits of being a member of this regional organization. Benefits to Plainville included over three point five million dollars in funding over the last five years for projects such as the repaving of Cook Street and, and as well as Northwest Drive, and the study of alternatives for the Farmington Canal Trail through town. They also coordinated a statewide aerial photography flight, which contributed significantly to the success of our GIS system for Plainville that can be found on the town website and available to all residents. There's other benefits that were listed as well. The annual cost of being a member of CROG is, is a little bit under fifteen thousand dollars, so I get, I think we get a very good bang for our buck. A copy of the five-year membership benefits to Plainville has been posted on the town website for those people who would like to see, you know, what, what being a member of CROG has, has, or at least the positive benefits that it, that have accrued to Plainville and other towns that have, that have been a part of it as well. So I think we talked about CROG a lot. I'm not sure that everybody understands. The regional council of governments, I attend most of their meetings. I'm actually the treasurer of CROG right now, so.
So you watch that contribution we send up there, right?
We do. We do.
Very closely.
We do. And then maybe another announcement coming in the not-too-distant future regarding another grant. Actually, we've, we've put in a couple of grants up there, and one of them is looking pretty positive, and the second one, we're waiting, we're waiting to hear on. So, so it certainly has been very beneficial to Plainville as compared to where we were, a part of the old regional, you know, planning agencies. Next item I have is the commemorative rally for former Governor Ellet Grasso on her one-hundredth birth anniversary. A committee headed by the historian of the town of Windsor Locks has invited the one hundred and sixty-nine cities and towns in Connecticut to attend a commemorative rally. cities and towns in Connecticut to attend a commemorative rally to celebrate the 100th birth anniversary of former Governor L.T. Grasso. The event is scheduled for June 2, 2019, at 2:00 p.m. at the State Capitol Building in Hartford. The committee is asking each town to appoint a representative to attend this event and to attend several events in Windsor Locks during their Heritage Week, which will be held during the last week of May in 2019. And I would ask that the council consider perhaps having someone be a representative that would be, perhaps be a part of this celebration. Doesn't have to be tonight. Plenty of time. The next item I have is the financial dashboard. The financial dashboard is, for the first month of fiscal year 19, was included in your meeting information package and has been posted on the town website. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Scott Colby, who will go through the financial dashboard as well as the happenings for, you know, that are occurring going forward.
Robert, before Scott begins, do we have a final year end as of June 30 regarding that budget? Or is that still being assimilated?
For fiscal year 18?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have it here this evening, no, I do not.
Okay.
I will say that in talking to Rob Buden, although I don't have the numbers, he said that we're pretty much where we expected to be.
Okay.
But we should have, we should be able to present something to you shortly.
Next meeting, maybe?
Maybe even before the next meeting.
Oh, all right.
It's just that between the projects that we've initiated and we're getting ready to go out for a bond issue in September, and between vacations and whatnot, it's, you know, it's just, we do, you know, there are encumbrances that go beyond, you know, June 30, and it just, it takes a while for all of that to head its way in.
Right. Well, you know, considering all that we went through for trying to keep things in balance throughout the year, I just was wondering if we have a year end yet, but next meeting is soon enough for me, if that's, if he needs time to put it all together.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Scott.
Not a problem. Good evening.
Hello.
On the financial dashboard for the expenditures, our total budget is at 60 million currently. Through the end of July, we spent about 10.8 million of that, which is 17.98%. Looking at the two-year average, which is 8.28%, we are slightly higher, and that's because we've moved $5.9 million for health insurance back into the general fund, getting rid of the health insurance fund in itself with the insurance changeover. So that's why you'll see some numbers a little skewed there. Mainly, it's on the Board of Ed side. Looking at the general government portion, we've spent to date 18.46%. This is 2.59% over our two-year budget. And for the Board of Ed budget, they're coming in at 17.69% spent, and their two-year average is at 3.39. And once again, that's due to the insurance changes. Moving on to the overtime, the police overtime is coming in at 3.7% less than our two-year average. We're coming in at 8.38% out of a $450,000 budgeted amount. The roadways overtime budget is coming in at 1.37% less than our two-year average, at 2.7% out of a 70,000 budget. Buildings and grounds overtime, with a budget of 17,686, is coming in at 7.74% less than the two-year average at 10.54%. And we have yet to see any snow, thankfully, in the summer, so we have nothing to show you in roadways or buildings and grounds at the moment. The hauler tonnages, we're coming in at 47 tons over our amount for July, which is 479 tons.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
I apologize. Can you give me that roadways OT number again?
For the budgeted amount?
Didn't you say we were under our two-year average? Because, and here it looks like we're over our two-year average.
Oh, that's my mistake, my mistake.
All right. I didn't know if I had a momentary lapse there and I caught it wrong, but okay. We're over our budget.
By 1.37%, yes.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Moving on to the revenues, for all revenues for the town, we're coming in at 20.6 million. This is coming in at 34.34%, which is slightly less than the two-year average. And the current taxes we've received as of the end of July are coming in at 20.3 million, and this is 2.34% less than our two-year average. The unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2018, estimated unassigned fund balance sits at 11%. And moving on to the special funds for Recreation Department, they're coming in at 11.93% spent in the expenditures, which is under their two-year average by 8.52%. For their revenues, they are slightly over their two-year average, they're coming in at 17.93%, which is about 2% over. On the airport, right now, the expenditures are coming in at about 0.15%, which is just 0.1, 0.2% over the two-year average. The revenues are coming in, we actually have yet to receive anything just due to the timing, and this is, our two-year average is at 3.77%. Moving on to the water treatment plant, we've spent to date 21.5, 21.57% on our expenditures, which is slightly under our two-year average, and the revenues are coming in at 0.37% on that, and that's just 0.15% under the two-year average. The library has expended 21.17% of their budget, it's about under by half a percent, and the revenues are coming in at 22.64%, which is over their two-year average by 11.17%. We have not yet received any of the finals for the Health Insurance Fund from Anthem. They ended up changing their systems, and they have yet to supply us with any of the year-end closings. I guess they've been having some technical difficulties in providing their reports with the new system, so we're still waiting to hear back from that. We'll be able to provide that information once we provide you with the year-end close of last budget. And for major projects in July, the only project that saw expenditures was the road bond. About $5,876 were spent, and the Northwest Drive rehabilitation project, in which $773,836 were expended for the project that's up there. My next item I have is the happenings. At the Senior Center, they are offering an AARP Smart Driver Course on Tuesday, August 21, at 1:00 p.m. This course is offered for Plainville residents age 60 and over, and covers the effects of aging and medications while driving, local hazards, accident prevention, and more. Upon completing the course, your insurance company must give you a discount of at least 5% off your auto insurance, and the cost for this is $15 for AARP members, providing a membership number, and $20 for all others. To reserve a spot for this event, please call the Senior Center. They are offering a benefits checkup drop-in program on Wednesday, August 22, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. At this event, a representative from the North Central Area Agency on Aging will use a web-based tool to determine your eligibility for benefits such as Medicare savings programs, SNAP, heat, utility assistance, food, and other programs. Forms will also be available, if you prefer to take one home, to fill it out and send back to the North Central Area Agency on Aging. Just stop by the Senior Center, no sign-up is needed for that event. And they're offering a Keeping Your Memory Strong at All Ages on Tuesday, Tuesday, September 4 through October 9, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Alzheimer's and dementia specialists from the Center for Healthy Aging are presenting a free five-part series that will focus on how to protect, preserve, and improve your memory. Attendees are encouraged to attend all the sessions. Each 45-minute session will cover different topics, followed by 15 minutes for a brain exercise and a question-and-answer session. And they ask that you register by calling the Senior Center for that event. Moving on to the library, they will be hosting their Friends Book Sale in September. On Friday, September 28, will be the preview night from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Admission to this event is $3 per person. On Saturday, September 29, they'll be offering the books sale from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The admission is free that day. And on Sunday, September 29, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., they will be having, it'll be $3 per bag, per first bag of books, and a dollar each bag for subsequent bags of books. And admission will be free for that day. For the Plainville Historical Society, they are hosting a 50th Anniversary Open House to be held at the Historic Center on Saturday, September 15, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. They ask that you RSVP no later than September 12 at 860-747-6577, or at plvhistorical@gmail.com. And the last item I have is just a reminder for the Balloon Festival road closures and parking restrictions. They will be having restricted parking on the south side of Robert Holcomb Way, South Canal Street, the access road off of South Canal Street, Rosalia Avenue, from the cul-de-sac to Prior Avenue, on Prior Avenue, South Washington Street, Broad Street, and Johnson Avenue at the cul-de-sac. On Friday, August 24, South Washington Street, Norton Trail, Norton Park Road, South Canal Street, and intersecting side roads to these streets will be closed except for local residents from 3:30 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. On Saturday, August 25, South Canal Street, Norton Park Road, and intersecting side roads to these streets will be closed except for local residents from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The decision to close South Washington Street and Norton Trail on Saturday will be based upon the volume of traffic and number of people attending the event. Traffic delays are expected on Friday and Saturday, so please plan accordingly. And that's all I have to report on.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Robert. Does anybody have any questions or comments for their individual reports? Thanks very much, both of you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it up for public comments during this, during this portion of our meeting. We welcome the public to come to either podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Please state your name and address. I have Catherine Labella, who signed up, so Catherine, you can go first.
Catherine Labella, 50 Pier Street. Before I start, I would like to extend a thank you and also ask a question about the recent grant submitted through CCOG. I want to thank Councilman Nazzo for his help, his assistance in obtaining no parking signs for the south end of Pier Street. It's helped us tremendously, and we hope it will continue to help us navigate that very narrow street. Regarding the grant funding to CRCOG, are either of those grants related to the next phase of the development of the trail?
I don't believe they are. Are they, Robert?
Yes, one of them is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, could you, you want to expand a little bit on that?
CROG has submitted a federal grant under the Build Program for the construction of the, of the trail through Plainville, based on the alternate, and it would cover the full cost of it, if awarded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It's important for you to say this tonight, then. I oppose alignment sea of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. Tonight, I would like to update you about some additional incidents of a sexual nature that have occurred on Connecticut trails this summer. In July, an East Hartford man was arrested after reportedly approaching a runner on a Manchester recreational trail, making a sexual advance and subsequently attempting to stab the runner when the advance was shunned. The man was later found and arrested for public indecency, threatening, and attempted assault. On July 24, a woman walking in the middle of the day on the Farmington River Trail in Canton reported being attacked and raped while on the trail to an acquaintance, who immediately reported the incident to the police. The assaulted woman later came forward with details of the attack. According to the reports, the woman was distracted by a small dog, left the trail, and was subsequently assaulted. It is believed that the man who assaulted her had a small, white dog with him. The investigating police recommend that people using the trail bring mace, pepper spray, or whistle with them, and exercise in pairs. This assault, by the way, occurred on a highly traveled section of the trail in the vicinity of the Canton Fire Department Houses and across street. How many incidents like these need to occur before the town recognizes one of the many negative impacts this trail will have on affected neighborhoods? Please say no to any future phase of alignment sea through Plainville neighborhoods, especially since there are state roads that can safely accommodate this trail through the town. As an aside, we have recently had vandalism in our parks. Trumble Park had the concession stand, and a storage unit vandalized. Paderewski Park had the water pad vandalized, and I am concerned that this is, this trail, being a linear park, is going to expose our neighborhoods to more vandalism. I respectfully request that this statement and the attached articles become part of the public record, along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
May I just respond?
Sure.
Ms. Labella, thank you very much for your kind words about the no parking, but I have to say, I was, you know, I was simply, I asked Mr. Lee about it, and we talked about it a little bit, and he really put it in motion. So let me share those thanks that you passed on to me with him, because he was really the catalyst, simply, he and I had a couple of conversations about it, and he did all the heavy lifting.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not signed up to speak? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mr. Councilman Carrier back.
Thank you.
Starting off, just one quick comment on the fire department ordinance. There are a lot of good things said tonight about our fire department volunteers. I think one of the words I didn't hear and I wanted to bring out is dedication. These people, they're getting along in years, and they just don't want to leave the fold. And you can't find better people than that. And that's another reason I'm glad I voted for those trucks. Number two, this has to do with the financial dashboard. I was kind of curious, because wasn't, we never seem to talk about it in the meetings. We talk about the revenues and the expenditures and all that, but we never seem to get into the different projects and the costs. And the reason being is, the reason, and I brought this up at a prior meeting, and the example I'm going to cite, well, the first thing, my first question, when projects come in under budget, where does the extra money go?
It just doesn't get spent.
No, what is it, and that's leading to my point.
Correct.
Do we have any, can we establish some sort of fund after what we've just experienced with our friends in Hartford? So can we relieve some of the tax paying on the residents of Plainville? Just a question.
Okay.
Okay. Number two is, and this is the part, and I brought this up at a prior meeting, and it helped me with this. I'm looking at the, what do you call it, the Wheeler School Project. Now, this is the May 31 report, May 30, 2018. Wheeler School Project, 22 million, project balance, 22,412,368. Now I turn to July's report, and if I'm not mistaken, the number's exactly the same. Now, why you say, why would I bring that up? The reason I bring it up is because I go to Capitol Project meetings, and I know we're paying a lot of invoices, the different construction groups, the architects, et cetera, et cetera. So wouldn't that be deleted from this report? And if not, where, where does that money come from?
You know, I can't answer the exact accounting for those types of invoices that come in. Will they eventually show up on this summary sheet, Robert?
The checks may not have been cut by the time that the report came out. Remember, it only goes through the end of July. The checks may not have been cut.
Some of them, if they were just sent out, they wouldn't appear on here.
Okay, fine. I have no problem.
I think it's a timing thing.
In other words, I'm sorry.
It's what's approved, it's what's been spent.
Right.
So there's a disconnect between the approval and when, and when the check's actually cut. There's a timing issue.
Okay. So expenditures to date for Wheeler School is 1.1 million, is that right?
As of July 31.
As of July 31, correct. So that's an accurate statement.
Oh, that's according to the Finance Department. I didn't go through their books, but that's, that's the information we got from the Finance.
They're the ones that, okay.
I'm not an accountant. All I'm looking for is, is there a report that gives me an idea how much is being spent monthly? That's all. That's all I'm, I'm not saying, I don't want finite, and you know, and I'm not accusing anybody of wrongdoing, it's just.
I understand. I understand.
The report that we give, the finance, the financial dashboard will tell you how much has been spent as of a particular date. If you want. If you want more detail, contact me.
Oh, no, 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 no. Unless I don't like the number.
Okay, all right. It's available if you want to see it.
I understand. You've been very good like that, and I thank you. The last one, and just a quick question, I know, and I don't know if this is the place to ask the question, the Capitol Building Projects, it's always one meeting at 6:00, and I noticed on the calendar, the town calendar, there's two meetings on the 27th. Is that correct, or is that an error? One's at 6:00 and then one at 7:00? And usually, all their meetings are just one at 6:00?
One may be the Aviation Commission is at 7:00. Capitol is at 6:00, so there may be a misprint there.
A misprint?
That's all, you know, Aviation's also on here, Mr. Lee.
Okay, we'll double check that. I think there's only one meeting scheduled for the 27th, for the Capitol Projects Building Committee.
Just asking.
Yep. It may last past 6:00, but it's not two different meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir?
Dave Albert, Hollyberry Lane. First, with Mr. Saunders being gone, this dog park needed a 5 to 2 vote, and it passed 4 to 3, and so it didn't pass. But can I get an insurance for the Roof family that this won't be voted on again?
Ever? Or that location?
You know where I'm going with it, yeah.
Well, I don't want to make it a subject.
As long as you're there, would you commit to not taking that spot site for the dog?
I will personally tell you that the majority of those that voted on the dog park at that time felt it was not a good place for that to happen. I don't believe we'll bring that back up again. We will continue to look for locations.
Okay.
For the dog park and elsewhere in town, but I don't believe we're going to return to that.
Okay, perfect. Second thing was the Tilcon Quarry. I know I asked if the town council would give an idea of where they stood on that. Just as more background on this, on the Suddington Water Department, on August 6th issued a letter to the State Water Planning Board, I don't know if you're aware of that, but basically saying that the Tilcon drilling that's been done has affected the contour of the land already, and the water which used to flow to Crescent Lake is no longer flowing to Crescent Lake. It's apparently flowing to the east. And people have come up to me and said that Hamlin's Pond is, after rain, is always very murky, a lot more silty than it used to be, so that makes sense. We know where the water is going. But on the 28th of this month, the State Water Quality Agency is issuing a report. I think it's important that the state, or the town council gives their views right now on whether they approve or disapprove of this quarry project, because there's stuff out there from town employees saying how great it is for the town. And the average citizen in the town of Plainville thinks that you guys are behind this. So I asked last time for some type of polling for you guys, and I think it's important that you guys say if you're yay or nay on this project, because it's very important to the town of Plainville. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Edmund?
Joel Edmund, 63, Hollyberry Lane. Some of you are probably wondering about what I have to say tonight. I've been wondering myself since our last town council meeting. There's a lot to wonder about in our little town of Plainville. A few examples, our high school parking lot, milling and repaving project, which is starting to look like we got a pretty good deal with all the unnecessary work that they are doing. The Tilcon Reservoir deal, I'm not going there. Enough has already been said. The sewer treatment plant, Wheeler School restoration project, Plainville Dog Park, and on and on it goes. But then lurking quietly from out of town is a planning that is being done on the No Rail Trail project. No Rail Trail. Someone mentioned to me, that would be a good name for it. I agree. Rails to Trails does not fit. I agree, maybe it makes sense if we could use that unavailable railway bed. No such luck. So these planners come up with a new name for it called the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Gap Closure. Remember when they used the term putting lipstick on the pig? I have been contemplating what a boondoggle it would be to have it. It's been estimated 200,000 acts of human activity plus animals of all sorts alongside my front or backyard all year long, night and day, forever. And not all that human activity will be legal. A sign prohibiting no motorized vehicles allowed will not stop the quads or ATV, snowmobiles or scooters from rampaging down through there when the coast is clear. I question anyone here who have not witnessed it already on our busy streets all year long. Regardless of the unnecessary cost to build and maintain, it would become a noisy nuisance, especially when Plainville already has inadequate system, but well-maintained sidewalks and bike lanes nicely striped and marked. The Canton Police, having quoted in Hartford Courant as urging residents to be cautious when on the bike trail and surrounding woods. It was relating to the woman in Canton that was sexually assaulted on the Rails to Trails there on July 24th. So I guess we have to include trails to long list of places where danger could be possible. If you see something, say something. Does not work out there on a trail? I don't believe in the boogeyman, but there are far more ominous things lurking out there to mess with the peace and quiet, safety in general, good quality of life. And who really wants to view or smell a stinky swamp or hazardous waste landfill as a wind through a maze of twists and turns, on-road, off-road, and almost off-road? And whatever or whoever already lives there, leave them alone. And one more thing, it would have been plausible if the planners showed some respect for our neighborhoods that will be negatively impacted by the construction of this trail, especially Perrin Road, Pier Street, Broad Street, and Hammond Way Streets. As always, no rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council who has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
And what I think I'll start with tonight is the quarry. Again, I guess Dave brought it up about Suddington refusing or opposing the quarry, the water company, and quite a few members of their town council. So we're looking to you guys to do the same, because it's not a good idea. It's going to cause a lot of problems, and we don't need that. So not all have, I guess, not all of them are against it, but they will be taking another vote. And that's so much for that. And leave Boy Rock alone. Already, there's cascades of water coming down alongside View Street, and all I can think of is that we're going to have waterfalls. And if we have waterfalls, especially if you blow up Boy Rock, is nothing holding that quarry back from all that water, the so-called water that they're going to, contaminated crap that they're going to have up there and think that we're going to drink it? No, I don't think so. I really, I hate to get, start losing my temper, but boy, you know, they come up with the darnedest ideas, and it's all against the people. Poor taxpayer down here in Death Valley. It will be Death Valley, especially if they start tampering with the Indians. Certainly will be Death Valley here. I've said it before, and I'm saying it again, watch out. Going to get it. So now we're on to what? Before that bell rings, that wonderful bell up there, wonderful respect for the taxpayer. The taxpayer gets no respect. We're like the third-class citizen, and we are the ones that provide the fuel that makes the machinery run in this town. And I don't like it that you ring those bells up there, because three lousy minutes doesn't do it. Now, I'm going to say something about the Historic Society. I think you did say something, couldn't hardly hear you, but it could be my hearing. And I want you to know that there was a wonderful article written by Brian Johnson, July 17th, and it shows a picture of Gertrude Lacombe. She's been doing a great job over there at the Historic Center. Now, there's another place that's, can be looked at as third-class citizens, because they don't get much help over there. And people really, they kind of just don't pay attention to the Historic Center, and it's such a treasure. And whoever is there works very hard. And poor Nancy, she's not feeling good, and Gertrude stepped up to the plate, and she's doing a great job. And there's a 50th anniversary over there, so everybody should try to get themselves over there to see it and support the Historic Center. It's a wonderful treasure. And that old town hall is quite a girl.
Thank you.
She's served us well. And again, I hope everybody's taking very good care of their animals. There's a lot of bad things going on. Come on, Kathy. I'm making really a public address. Now, stop, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm just reminding you that I let you go.
People, I hope, are taking care of their animals. It's hot.
Okay.
It's going to get hotter. I hope they're taking care of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not had a chance?
Thank you for all the time you give.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
I feel facetious.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your comments. I will close the public comments section of the meeting. We have no items for old business, so we will move into our new business section. May I have a motion for item number one?
Motion to adopt a proposed amendment to an ordinance entitled Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a proposed amendment to an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Truck Project.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Just one item. Kathy, just one item. Can it include the comments made by the police chief as well after review by the town attorney?
Okay. Can we add that as a amendment?
You can add that to, as long as, if the motion understands that, then that's fine.
My second understands that.
Okay. Everybody understand there'll be slight grammatical changes to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, two-parter.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to A, accept the donation of land totaling 3.8 acres, map block lot 44-E-10, located on Ledge Road from Oakland Developers. B, accept the donation of three parcels of land totaling 33.9 acres, map-block-lot 07-A-17, 07-A-17A, and 08-A-35, located on and near Northwest Drive from Roger Toffelon Estate in Connecticut Sand and Stone.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on either one of those items?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm just, to clarify, I'm assuming these properties are basically undevelopable? Is that what it is? Is that why they're donating it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, you know, I know we talked about this back when we did the referral to planning and zoning. But just wanted to say again that, you know, I understand, totally and truly understand sometimes the concerns when we take over properties like this, but I think, you know, certainly in this case, the second one especially, is a significant size, it's almost 34 acres.
Yes.
It's adjacent to other open space, and it does provide habitat for wildlife, you know. And the other thing we always have to consider in Plainville, that we're geographically a very small town, and, you know, we need to balance keeping open space. And our next agenda item, we're talking about developing, developing land.
More space.
Land. So, you know, I think it's keeping the balance between the two, which is important.
Great. Thanks for that comment. Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On the Oakland Developers, I listened to Mr. Albert talk about this for a while, going back probably a few months. I can understand where, you know, it looks like we're just taking a small piece of unusable land to get it off somebody's tax rolls, you know, from having to pay the town. But the reason I'm in favor of us accepting this donation is where it's located. We're having a lot of conversation about that area of Plainville right now, and I understand it's probably set a little bit away from the hotbed area of the quarry, but, you know, I'm hearing about there's endangered species relatively close to this area. So, well, it's not really a usable piece of land. If we can protect that 3.8 acres and what is there with it, then I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with FCP-2 LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further comment? We made a lot of them when Mark spoke to us earlier. Does anybody have anything else to add? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the guaranteed maximum price proposal with ONG Industries, Inc. for the high school site improvements.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. Next, we have other discussions of interest. Mr. Lee, do you have any other items you wish to share with us?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, again, welcome back Mr. Carrier to your seat up here on the town council. I'm looking forward to working with you as we have in the past, so thank you for agreeing to rejoin us, and congratulations again to Laurie Consavo as a new Board of Education member. Very best of luck to both of you. Okay. We have no executive session items, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next month.